Councilman Song, not on video. Councilman Erso, and Sabari are not on video, but they're on audio. I believe they also can see us, but we can't see them. Okay, with that, we always start our meetings with the flag salute, so I'll do so. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the Republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
I want to take this opportunity for a moment of silence. In solemn tribute, we offer this moment of silence to remember, in our thoughts and prayers, five of our residents who passed away from COVID-19-related complications. We also remember our Englewood Cliffs resident, Mark Byron, who passed away last month. And as we take that moment of silence, let's do so now. Thank you. We, I could give you a bit of an update on what's been a very long three months for everyone in the United States and in our town. We have right now 54 active cases of COVID-19. I am very proud, and I continue to be very proud, of our community and how our community handled these past three very adverse months. I am glad that we were able to protect health, safety, and privacy without any overreaching by your local government. We try to stay out of your way and keep your lives as normal as possible. As society and the economy reopen, we will continue to be vigilant. We are socially distanced here in this room right now, and it's always, it's always been my view that we can protect lives and livelihoods at the same time. So, you know, here in Englewood Cliffs, I believe we are succeeding, and I thank you all, residents and employees, for cooperating and doing that together. Our police department has been exceptional during this period as well. And last month, I also mentioned that we are very fortunate and blessed to have a caring community that has answered the call to help each other without any fanfare or publicity. They have all stepped up to take care of our community, and these are our volunteers. I will repeat my offer of special thanks to the following people in case you missed it last month. Members of the Chinese-American community here in Englewood Cliffs, led by Angela Chang and Fan Huang and William Wu. They donated personally and delivered thousands of face masks to any resident requesting one or more in multiple times to charitable and religious organizations in the area that have reached out to me requesting face masks. Over Chinese, over 40 Chinese-American families in our community contributed to that effort. So I thank you all. I applaud you for your sense of community. Next, I thank our grocery shoppers. These are people who I asked if they would help senior citizens to get groceries, to keep our seniors safe, and that request was answered overwhelmingly, and the following people helped out. Claude Hubbard, Elias Fontekeidis, Anish Baphna, Gerald Miss, Sweater Jane, Penal Shah, Jennifer McDermott, Peter Tang, and my children. Also offer a special thanks, I don't know if you heard it last meeting, but I'll repeat it. We had a freshman resident high school student, Sue John Munver, who produced 75 3D-printed face shields for Department of Public Works and Police Department. Sue Jan presented the face shields outside the Police Department to Chief Hankelman, Superintendent of DPW Neville, and me. So yes, Englewood Cliffs did care, and Englewood Cliffs continues to care. Thank you. Madam Kirk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
As a good notice of this meeting was given to the folks at our department, waiting time is scheduled for the opening of the open public meetings act. It's known to be filed with the municipal board and posted on the board. The municipal meeting will be made available by the public upon completion of the opening of the meetings.
Thank you. Also, next on our agenda is what's referred to as the Borough Charity Project, and this is a project where we collect non-perishable food items for the Office of Concern Food Pantry at St. Cecilia's Church in Englewood. We've been doing that for about two years now at every regular meeting. I realize everyone's home, but you can still drop off food items here in divestiture of the Police Department or directly at the Office of Concern. They also accept monetary donations if you go onto their website. So the thought behind this is to do something good at every meeting, even if we're not getting along here as a governing body and arguing over things, that at least we'll leave here tonight and every night that we're here, having done something good for somebody Next on the agenda are the Department Head Reports for May 2020. The council members should have all received those. We don't have any representatives of a department head on the Borough Administrator here tonight. So if you have any questions, you could ask some people now, or you could just ask, and we'll relay your question. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you for reviewing those. On our correspondence list, we had the Planning Board Annual Review 2019, and we also received a letter from the Kim Law Firm. Next on the agenda are, you know, I should also mention, the Kim Law Firm, that was a request on behalf of a restaurant. It seemed like a little confusing, it was on behalf of one restaurant, but it seemed to be talking about, referring to several restaurants in the area about changing their outdoor dining status and ability. And, you know, there's some significant issues with doing that in some cases because of the parking situation in town. Next on the agenda are the closed session minutes.
Mayor, point of order on the closed session minutes. Can I just request of the mayor and council that we have some kind of timeline for the closed session from previous to be completed within a certain timeframe? It's very difficult to go back almost 18 months on some of these minutes. You know, they go back to January 10 of last year, and I think it affects the accuracy of the minutes and our ability to review them. I know we've never had a time cap on that previously, but I would like to throw that question to the mayor and council. I would say, my suggestion is, you know, within six months after the meeting, we should have the closed session minutes completed.
I guess, I don't think anyone on council would object to that. I think that that would be prudent. In terms of disclosure to the public, it may not be permitted within that six months, depending on some of the subject matters. I think that they'd either have to be redacted or not produced if it's relating to ongoing litigation, for example. So is there anyone on council who would object to that timeline? Make it a target, even if it's not a hard and fast rule, but we can make it a target?
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
That's okay.
Point of order regarding the minutes. I know that there were some changes made to the minutes.
And to the most part, I really don't think it's an issue, but on the January 10 meeting,
Mayor, you made some changes, but you weren't present in the closed session. So I don't know why those, I don't know if ultimately those changes were made to the minutes, but I don't think you can really make changes to the minutes if you weren't in the session.
Well, I think to be clear, I wasn't present for part of the meeting, and I recused myself, so I wasn't commenting as to that.
No, it says that you were absent in the closed session. Otherwise, I wouldn't even, and I don't necessarily take issue with your changes, I mean, they're just your opinions, but I don't think that the minutes of the clerk should be changed to reflect your opinion if you weren't even.
I don't have it in front of me in terms of my markup, but I think you might be confusing something.
Am I confusing something, Lizette?
But anyway, if I wasn't there, I'm not commenting on it, so feel assured that I wouldn't.
Okay, so then your comments will not be made part of the minutes of January.
Depends which one you're talking about. If I was there, my comment should be considered. If I wasn't there, then I wouldn't have had any comments, so I'm not voting on these anyway, so.
Well, I'm, Lizette, the changes that were made to the minutes that he was not present at the meeting, were they made or were they not made?
The changes that were made were a phrase or a statement that someone in closed session made, repeating the statement of the mayor's, and the mayor, I guess, corrected the statement. So no, he was not present at that meeting, he was correcting the statement that someone else said.
So may I make the motion to pass the minutes as originally written without any changes? That's my motion.
That's fine. You can make that motion. I'll just go back to the ones in terms of everything I marked up.
Councilman Erso, the changes that the mayor made, aside from the January 10, they really didn't change the context of all the minutes.
I thought you were just talking about the January 10 ones that he wasn't there. I'm sorry.
Did you read the minutes, Ed?
Excuse me, Mario, you're echoing a little bit.
I'm sorry, I'm asking whether or not you read the minutes.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. It's a bad echo.
You mean, I'm asking whether or not you read the minutes.
Yes, I read the minutes. But Mario, you're echoing, so it's kind of reverberating, and I'm not catching every word you're saying. I don't know if that's on my end or your end, but.
All right, we're going to vote on the minutes?
So was that a motion to approve all of them?
Yeah, yes, yes.
All right, so.
Second?
I second that motion.
Okay.
So can we just add a little formality here? So Ed is making a motion, and Gloria seconded it.
Yes.
To approve the minutes, January 2019, January 13, 2019, January 24, 2019, and February 13, 2019.
So, I'm trying to understand, so we're voting on changing the minutes of the meeting that you were not in attendance?
No, not those, just all the other ones.
So we're separating out that meeting from the others?
Correct.
Well, I'm not voting.
Yeah, neither of them vote.
I understand that. There's a motion on the table, I'm asking for clarity.
Councilman Erso, can we split them into the four separate minutes? Because two of the minutes, I will be voting differently from the other two, so.
Sure, sure. So why don't we do them one at a time then, or however you think, though, that's fine. Yeah, okay.
Everyone's naming, you just. He said, you are muted.
Are you muted?
I'm muted because I'm sorry.
I mute mine.
Okay, the mayor's unmuted.
Just so everybody is listening, if we're both not muted, there's an echo, so I won't vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, you know what, and maybe lower? Okay, Councilperson Sparrow?
I wasn't there. I wasn't there in 2019.
Abstain.
Lizette, which ones are we doing? Are we breaking them into spots like Councilman?
Yeah, we're doing them in the order I have them printed in.
Okay, okay.
Tell you what, I'll, okay, abstain. Councilperson Sabari?
Lizette, say which one you're doing first, so we know.
Okay. January 10.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Sabari, January 10 as originally presented?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Erso?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Okay, next one is January 15. Councilperson Sparrow?
Abstain.
Sabari? Oh, yes. Song?
Yes.
Erso?
Yes.
Wu?
Abstain for the purpose of clarifying my comments in the minutes. I will resolve that with you, Lizette, afterwards, and we can table my, table any changes later.
January 24. Councilperson Sparrow? Sabari?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Erso?
Yes.
Wu?
Abstain for the same reason as January 15.
February 13. Councilperson Sparrow? Sabari?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Erso?
Yes.
Wu? Okay, thank you.
Point of order, Mayor.
Yeah.
I'd just like to read a resolution I want to add to the agenda for the purpose of, you know, bridging some of this divide that we have on the council and addressing many of the email exchanges between yourself and various council members. Can I share the screen?
I'm not sure the Borough Attorney should opine on that. I don't think you can come up with a resolution that, you know, at the last minute that hasn't been added to the agenda.
We've.
I've been criticized.
Unique situation.
What's the unique situation?
This has been tabled before at the mayor-council meetings, and on top of that, even today's agenda, we didn't get the final resolution until very, very late in the afternoon.
But you had all caucus meeting to talk about it, what happened?
So can I read the resolution?
So you can make it, you know, Councilman Wu, to clear any objections, you can make it into a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
I second that.
To table.
I second that motion.
You got to hear, you got to hear the motion first, Ramon. I just want to give him my chance to speak.
Hold on, I'd like to make a motion. Can I read it? I'm going to read it now, okay?
Yes, go ahead. Everybody else, one person at a time. Councilman Wu has the floor, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the investigation of Gloria O, Edward Erso, Deborah Sabari, Jimmy Song, and Ellen Park relating to, just let me finish that, just relating to the Borough's affordable housing litigations in regards to the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, B E R L 611915 and 800 Silvin versus the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, B E R L 69-18 and A 4019-172 and other related matters. Whereas since January 3 through today, Gloria O, Edward Erso, Deborah Sabari, and Jimmy Song have controlled the Borough Council, whereas Ellen Park was a council member through December 31, 2019. Whereas the facts addressed herein include Ellen Park only through December 31, 2019. Whereas O, Erso, Sabari, Song, and E. Park affirmatively and by their own admissions and as confirmed by Borough Councils have excluded Mayor Mario Kranjak and Councilman William Wu and Councilman Ramon Farrow in 2020 from communications provided to and received from the various Borough Attorneys in 2019 and 2020. Whereas O, Erso, Sabari, Song, and E. Park affirmatively and by their own admissions and confirmed by Borough Councils excluded Mayor Mario Kranjak and Councilman William Wu and Ramon Farrow in 2020 from participating in litigation strategy and negotiations. I'll be done in 30 seconds. In 2019 and 2020, whereas Mario Kranjak repeatedly demanded access to communications and participation in litigation strategy and negotiations in 2019 and 2020. Whereas O, Erso, Sabari, Song, and E. Park secretly negotiated a memorandum of understanding and a draft settlement agreement with 800 Silvin and Fair Share Housing Council in 2019. Whereas O, Erso, Sabari, Song, and E. Park took an oath of office to uphold the laws of the United States of America and the state of New Jersey. Whereas in order to protect the interests of the Borough and its residents, an investigation of O, Erso, Sabari, Song, and E. Park is required. And whereas pursuant and consistent with NJSA 4860-5, the mayor recommends to the council such measures set forth herein as being necessary or expedient for the welfare of the Borough and its residents. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of Englewood Cliffs, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, that the mayor be and hereby is authorized and empowered to retain special independent counsel having investigatory experience to investigate the actions and omissions of O, Erso, Sabari, Song, and E. Park relating to the communications and litigation strategy. Also to provide the governing body with a report of his or her findings and to take all necessary and appropriate legal actions, including but not limited to the payment of reasonable attorney fees to assert any of the Borough's rights as outlined in the report.
Do you have a second?
I second that.
Do you have a vote?
You have totally lost it.
Yeah, I know. Billy, you got no guts, man.
Good job, Billy. Good job, Mayor. Good job, Ramon.
I would caution the council.
You guys really.
It's questionable.
Did the mayor have anything to do with writing the resolution?
You could have the floor after.
Let's investigate the three of you.
Let's investigate everybody.
Let's look into the sunshine wall.
Great job, great job.
Okay, you guys can get together and write out a resolution.
Billy Puppet, that's your new name, Billy Puppet.
Thank you.
Perfect, it works, man. I know you didn't write that, Billy.
Billy, when did you?
Good job, show your face, Billy.
Why don't you guys vote on it right now?
Of course we're going to vote.
I would caution that you guys are probably conflicted from voting.
Yeah, caution what?
Good luck with that.
Billy, great. Just laughable.
Yeah, you are a joke.
Seriously, oh my God.
Oh my God, Mayor, I can't believe you got him to drink your Kool-Aid.
Wow. Billy, you are dumber than you look, man. I can't believe it.
Thank you, I appreciate it again.
Let's take the vote.
Take the vote, take the vote. It's ridiculous.
I suggest that you all recuse yourselves if you're deciding.
I suggest you mind your business and move on.
Mayor, I suggest that next time you don't draft the resolution for someone to read it, okay?
Oh, I asked William to read that, and we coordinated.
Of course you did.
Oh, that's great. You mean, you wrote it, the puppet read it.
Why didn't you ask Sparrow to do it?
The damage that you all have done to this Borough needs to be.
Oh, what you've.
Just stop. It's okay.
What's the concern? If there's nothing, if there's no issues, what's the concern?
There is no concern.
Just go forward with the investigation.
Take the vote. Let's make a motion to investigate everybody.
And that's fine, that's fine, Jimmy.
Oh, Jimmy, listen.
You said humor them and take the vote.
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 Cancelperson Sparrow?
Yes.
Sabari?
Absolutely not.
Oh?
No.
Song?
No.
Erso?
No.
Wu?
Yes.
Billy the Puppet, way to go, buddy.
Let's send more to taxpayers' money on your non.
That's right. Mario, you're whining about legal fees, and then you go and do that.
Stop it, let's move on. This is.
One person at a time. Are you finished?
Moving on.
Okay, let me finish.
No, let's move on. You don't have any proof to say.
You have to stop interrupting, okay? NorthJersey.com loves writing articles about you interrupting.
Motion to approve Resolution 20-85.
Hold on a second. I have the floor.
I second the motion.
There's a motion on the floor.
There's no motion on the floor.
There's a motion in a second.
There's a motion in a second.
What I actually wanted to do is finish.
No, we don't need to hear more speeches from you now, Mayor.
Look, you have.
This is Borough business.
Hey, it's done, Mario, get over it.
No, 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 I want the public to understand.
Motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor. Let's go.
There's a motion on the floor in a second.
Motion on the floor.
Look, I.
There's a motion on the floor in a second.
No, 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 listen.
Yes. There's a motion on the floor in a second. Take the vote.
Take turns speaking, okay? I have the floor.
I made a motion.
Oh, you don't, Mario. There's a motion in a second, there's a vote on the floor.
Ed, you must stop interrupting. You hide behind a screen, nobody even sees.
We're not hiding behind anything.
Doesn't matter, Mario. There's a motion in a second, take the vote.
What I was saying was that the public needs to understand that.
Take the vote.
O, Erso, and Song.
Take the vote, please, Mario. Run the meeting appropriately.
Us to have access to the attorney.
Do that from the pulpit, do not play political games. This is the Borough business, not you playing political games.
No.
No, you can't tell her to mute us.
I can, because you're.
We're not playing any games, we just spend another $100,000 this month.
I want to spend more, Billy, the puppet's got you.
And another $7,000 last month. This is the only way for us to get this.
There's a motion in a second. Let's take the vote. Don't threaten her, Mario.
No, 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 because you guys put her in this position, right? All you have to do is let me speak.
There's a motion in a second, take the vote.
No, 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 the public needs to understand that for the last year and a half.
They understand, you, Billy the Puppet tried to make something pass, it didn't pass, so move on.
No, no, but the public needs to understand that we are still not receiving the information that we are entitled to from our own attorneys that you control.
That's not true.
Yeah, another $100,000.
Take the vote, take the vote.
That's why.
Another $100,000 in bills this month.
You know, you just want to start new litigations, new money that the taxpayer's going to pay for nonsense. None of us have done anything wrong.
You should be comfortable with what you did, and you clearly aren't comfortable with it, right?
No.
You violated a voting ethic.
I've done nothing wrong.
You voted to not have an investigation of yourself, so that's.
That's right, take the vote.
The size are doing, right? So I had also prepared with a proclamation.
There's a motion.
Proclamation? You got proclamation?
That's not on the agenda.
So it doesn't have to be, and.
There's a motion in a second.
Here's the proclamation, whereas for generations.
Oh, here we go.
Come on, Mario, stop it.
Well, maybe you'll want to join me in this.
Politics.
Maybe you'll want to join me in this.
Can we please deal with our own business?
You have to mute them.
No, you don't have to mute us.
No, you don't.
You have to stop.
No, under New Jersey law, I control the meeting.
Robert rules our order, there's a motion on the floor.
No, I was speaking.
Let's go.
Interrupting me, Jimmy.
There's a motion on the floor, you're interrupting everyone.
I am directing the clerk to mute you until I finish.
You can't direct it.
I'm directing it. Whether or not she does is up to her, but she knows that under New Jersey law, I get to gavel and I get to stop out of control, council.
You get to gavel, you're acting like a maniac.
You're the king of law and order, is that it?
Okay, good. So Lizette's not doing her job either. Let me finish my proclamation, whereas for generations.
Take the vote, Mario, and then you can read your proclamation. Take the vote.
There's a motion.
I have the floor, guys, you keep interrupting me, and I will not stand.
Take the vote, and then you can read your proclamation if the council allows it.
Ed, you lost an election and you're still sorry about it.
It doesn't bother me, I don't know why you keep whining about that.
Just let him read the proclamation, come on.
Follow the rules, Billy.
Let's take the vote, there's a motion in a second.
Just because your puppet master wants to do it, doesn't mean it's okay.
How many times have you used the word puppet master, Ed?
I don't know what the first puppet master I used.
Keep going, Ed, keep going.
More motion.
No, I want to read it without interruption.
Well, after you would take the vote.
Let me finish it. I had the floor, Ed, and that's.
No, you didn't have the floor, Mario, that's not true.
I don't know where you are, but whatever you're drinking must be really good, because you're making.
It's the second time you accuse me of drinking, Mario, you better watch it, brother. That's the second time tonight.
I'll read it. Whereas for generations...
That's the second time you did that.
I will keep going back and starting over, Ed, every time you interrupt.
There's a motion to...
Whereas for generations, the law enforcement officers of Englewood Cliffs, Bergen County, and the state of New Jersey have answered the call to serve and protect our communities. Our law enforcement officers embody the courage and honor that represent the best of Englewood Cliffs, Bergen County, and the state of New Jersey. And whereas in moments of danger and desperation, the first people we turn to are law enforcement officers. Often unsung heroes risk their lives so we can live in peace and security. And whereas we owe dutiful respect and humble gratitude to the law enforcement officers of Englewood Cliffs, Bergen County, and the state of New Jersey, who work tirelessly to protect us, to maintain and defend civil order in our community. Now therefore, I, Mario M. Cranjak, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Englewood Cliffs, New Jersey, do hereby express sincere gratitude to law enforcement officers who wear the badge and are selfless civil servants, putting themselves in harm's way to keep us safe, and ask that all citizens join me in giving these dedicated professionals the support and appreciation they deserve. In witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the borough of Englewood Cliffs to be affixed this 10th day of June 2020. Thank you for letting me read that. If you care to join in that proclamation with me, I'm happy to have you...
I think it's great that you finally recognize our police department and give them gratitude. We've been giving them gratitude for decades, but thank you for finally recognizing them publicly.
Well, here's the thing, right, Deb, and it's always nice to hear you chime in, but you never actually explain everything. We are actually coming up on the one-year anniversary of a new police chief. And I am very pleased to report that after one year of having Chief Henkelman in charge of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department, the department has had its integrity, professionalism restored. It has had its relationship with a governing body restored.
It was always there.
We are seeing the last vestiges of being politically beholden to the machine that once governed this town.
I appreciate that, Mario, I really do. I appreciate that, because I know I led that charge, and I appreciate that.
Happy to have you join in with me, and we'll all sign it together.
That would be very nice.
And you're in? Counselwoman O, are you in? Counselwoman...
Yes, I'm here, Mayor, yes.
Counselwoman Oversa, are you in?
I appreciate you allowing me to lead the charge in hiring the new chief and doing that whole research and process, which wasn't done in the past. I really do, Mario, I'm with you on this one.
Counselwoman Song?
Yes.
Counselwoman Faro?
Yes.
Counselwoman Woo?
Yes.
It's unanimous. We'll circulate, sign it, and present it to the chief and the Englewood Cliffs Police Department.
Okay, so now can we vote on the motion? Motion to approve Resolution 20-85.
No, we have to open...
We haven't had public comments yet.
Debbie, there's...
Okay, you're correct, Mayor.
Yeah, there's documents and agenda, we'll follow the agenda. Can I have a motion to open to the public?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the virtual setting is a little difficult, so if there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, signal to us by raising your hand, thumbs up, wave your hand, maybe we'll see it. If you're called, and when you're called, you'll be unmuted, just state your name and address, please, and just tell us what you want to say. Yes. Mrs. O'Shea?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a few things that I'd like to bring to attention of the mayor and council.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, I just need your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mary O'Shea, 12 Irving Avenue, Englewood Cliffs. Last month, it was brought up that the clerk, Lizette Duffy, who was in charge of filling Oprah requests, is a defendant in six of the lawsuits listed on tonight's agenda, had omitted her own name. Tonight, her name is missing again. Also, defendant Michael Chiaffi, who was listed on the agenda last month in item number seven, has been admitted tonight. Also, is that favorable treatment for one of your favorite police chiefs?
Are you asking me or the clerk?
I'm asking the clerk.
Okay, because you know how I feel.
What is the question?
The question, or are you playing favorites?
I'm not playing favorites, I follow the law.
Okay, the clerk says she's not playing favorites, and that she's following the law, I don't know if you heard her.
I did, but the answer is that his name was on there last month as a defendant on number seven, and this month he was left off as she was left off. And I want to know why this disparaging and differential treatment is listed on the way the agenda is listed. Okay? Also, last month, there was a question as to why the items had been ruled, why items that had been ruled against the borough were listed, and the answer that Mr. Marinello gave was that they were being appealed. The question was who authorized the expenditure of taxpayer funds to appeal a fine against the clerk, which was noted by the judge not to be paid by taxpayer funds. Again, when was that voted on?
I don't believe there was a vote.
There was not, but there was money, every time you do something for one of the lawyers, you have to vote on it in a public session, and that was never voted on.
Asking borough council or the clerk?
Anybody?
My recollection is that it was not voted on, it was not approved, but there was, I believe, guidance offered to the borough attorney.
Okay.
Jason, do you want to...
I'd have to talk with Mr. Marinello, I don't have the answer on hand.
Okay, we'll ask it every month, I'll ask it every month until we get an answer. The answer from Mr. Marinello at the time was that it was being appealed. Now, it also should be noted that Mr. Marinello reviews and approves Oprah requests and responses, and basically bills for the same, for that review, and is billing to go to court and to lose in court. And now he's going to increase his fees further by billing for the appeal. So he's appealing on behalf of the clerk, which is really appealing his own work, or your work, Jason, whoever did it, by appealing, and he approves those redactions and deletions, and not filling them. All right, now, it's very self-enhancing by doing this, appealing his own fees, with his own fees, and we should not be paying for the clerk's defense. Whatever her fine was for, by the court, should be paid by the clerk, and we should not be incurring further legal fees to appeal a fee that she's responsible for by paying her attorney. And him being the one that gives advice to the clerk, he shouldn't be charging for defending her. He should do it pro bono for her, because he's the one who told her to respond that way. Now, another question that I have, when did the borough start closing municipal offices on Friday?
So we did that about a month and a half or two months ago during the coronavirus uptick in town, as a way to protect our employees and visitors. On Fridays, we basically deemed that the day where the buildings are all disintected thoroughly, to provide for a safer work environment, and also under guidance that three days of no activity would better the likelihood of having no virus present on any situation and something else.
Oh, that...
They're working from home, and there's a phone number where you could call. I think we're trying, obviously, to get back to normal, and if there's a question, but...
Well, I have a comment about that, because there's nothing on the borough website that says the offices are closed on Friday. So you're talking we've been closed for six or eight weeks on Fridays, Mayor?
Four Fridays.
It's been closed for four Fridays.
Four Fridays, okay. All right. And are the employees having one day's salary deducted from the office being closed?
No, they're all working from home, like pretty much the rest of the country was...
Okay, so if they're working from home, basically they're doing borough business on those Fridays from home, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, okay.
I'll say that's correct, except that there are no confidential or sensitive documents being taken out of Borough Hall.
Okay, well, the reason I became aware of this, I had put in an Oprah request on a Thursday, and when I expected to get the Oprah request back, I was advised by the clerk that it wouldn't be due for a few more days, because they were closed on Fridays. So if they were closed on Fridays, it's not a holiday, okay? And those days should have counted toward the seven days in filling the Oprah request. And it's not like that was anything that had to be done that Friday, the request was submitted during the day on Thursday, and then I was advised that they were closed on Friday, then they were closed on Monday, was a holiday, so then they only had a couple of days, and then there was another Friday closed. So if you're working from home, those days should have counted in the seven days, and not have extended the time period further, because the office was closed.
Yes, I don't know if any executive orders of the governor told the timeframe for doing that. The clerk is saying it's 21 days, if needed.
But it wasn't asked if I wanted to extend it, I wasn't asked, I was supposed to be...
I wasn't aware of it, I wasn't involved, but I just think that a lot of, and I'll have to double check this, because I don't know, but maybe Jason does, borough attorney, I don't know if the executive orders of the governor told any of that timeframe.
I don't think he knew you were closed, okay?
Can we all just give everybody a little bit of, you know, time here? I mean, we are in the middle of the coronavirus, I mean, the offices are closed, she doesn't have access to the documents, I mean, is your...
What I asked for, Mrs. Sabari, was a copy of the tape from last month's meeting, which she would get when she was in the office. So it wasn't anything that she could do at home, therefore she could have done it when she was back in the office, she didn't need to extend the time period. And what I'm saying is that day out of the office is a workday, it counts as part of the seven days. That's what I'm trying to get at.
No, I understand what you're saying, I'm just saying, couldn't you give a little leniency here? I mean, or are you going to hire an attorney to go after the borough, because it's a couple of days late, that's all I'm saying. I mean, we have to work with each other here. This is costing the town a fortune, the same attorney is handling all of the Oprah cases.
It wouldn't happen, Debbie, if the documents were given to us, or given when they were asked for, instead of having to go to court and get...
It's just an overabundance.
Not by me, Debbie, not by me, okay? So that's...
You're just one person, you're just one person.
I know, I know.
I'm not blaming you personally.
The public is, you know, is well within their rights to request under Oprah.
I understand that, Mayor, I'm just asking for, you know, a little time here, we're all trying to deal with working remotely and getting things done.
Now, I also want to know why the May Zoom meeting was not posted on the borough website. I made an Oprah, which is the Oprah that I'm discussing, I paid for a copy, I got it, I looked at it, it's fine, and I want to know why it has not been posted on the website.
I don't know, I'll defer.
Okay, can I answer all of Mrs.'s?
You can unmute. Mrs. O'Shea, the information you requested was provided to our borough attorney. I believe you asked for logs that he needed to provide, his email logs, correct?
Talking about that, I was just, when I was talking...
Mrs. O'Shea, if I may, I'd like to respond to all your questions regarding your Oprah.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So you presented an Oprah to my office on Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, that Oprah was forwarded to the appropriate attorney that would handle the logs, and that was Mr. Marinello. I leave that with him to provide review, redactive necessary, and then forward it to me. That was number one. I had to wait for the log to be provided after review. Number two, as far as the Zoom was concerned, you know this is all very new to us, I am not a professional as far as working on Zoom, I have taught myself how to do Zoom, how to record, how to re-record and provide...
Can play basketball all this time? Oh my God, Steve...
I'm sorry, I could hear something in the background. I had trouble with the Zoom, in fact, I even asked one of the attorneys if he was aware as to how to re-record and provide audio, and he did not. I had to Google, I had to search the internet as to how to provide the Zoom tape to you. Your Oprah was one day late. One day. As soon as you emailed me, I made sure, I contacted Mr. Marinello on my own time, which was in the evening, and I said, please get me the log so I can provide it to Mrs. O'Shea. You had all your information by Monday, June 1st, instead of Thursday, May 28th. Now, under the GRC, all clerks were instructed that if needed, due to COVID, an extension of 21 days can be taken. I saw no need for 21 days, I didn't think an extra day, or perhaps two, would be a problem. But, again, like Mrs. Sabari said, are you going to sue? Probably, I'll probably get something next week. I'm finished, thank you.
Anyone else that had any questions, comments?
One other comment I have, that tonight, the resolutions for the items on the agenda were not posted at 6:15, when I kept refreshing my computer, and they were posted a few minutes later than that, they did come up, but that makes it very difficult to try to read everything before you start the meeting. And I would ask that, especially with Zoom, as the clerk has problems with Zoom, as members of the audience, I'm not familiar with Zoom either, and every time I try to use it, I end up with issues. So I would like to have a little time to read the resolutions, that's all.
There is no difference then when you come to a meeting at 6:30, and the packet is provided at 6:30.
Well, it would be nice if you had them, you could put it out a few minutes...
Actually, at 6:15, I was here.
You have that working?
That packet was provided on the internet, on the website prior to 6 o'clock.
No, it wasn't, because I kept refreshing it and it wasn't there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to be heard? Seeing and hearing no one.
Yes, Mr. Perino, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Russell Perino... I didn't see you raise your hand. That's okay, I tried to, it's away. Okay. Okay. Russell Perino, 220 Fairview Avenue. Good evening, I missed the caucus meeting, I did receive a phone call that once again, one or more councilpersons attacked the planning board as the cause of our affordable housing problems. Mayor, is that true?
Correct. Mr. Oversa, Ms. Sabari.
Mr. Mayor, you advised you not to speak on anything that was discussed during closed session?
I believe it was done during the public...
It was done during the public, the budget discussion.
Very good.
That's what I was told.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Things. With regard to the planning board budget, we have increased amount of legal fees as they relate to the affordable housing litigations, that's plural. We were not involved in any great way in the litigation expenses up until recently, and the reason why we are now involved in it is because of the judge's orders and the planning board's involvement with the builder's remedy suit, an application by Hina Sylvan that will be heard in, I believe, September, middle of September, that hearing will start. So that process has brought the planning board in front and center, although we're not going to be hearing the application per se, we will be appearing on behalf of the borough, representing the borough's interests at those hearings. So I wanted to be clear that if our housing plan had been held... had been uh, held uh, and and continued in a path that it was planned back before Democratic majority took office or took control, we would not have, in my estimation, the builder's remedy suit that we're facing now and the expenses that have been continuing. The even the special master's report after the trial in January suggested that the Borough should have the right to amend our plan of 77 units, uh, as is typically the case in uh, in other um, affordable housing communities, let's say. So the fact that we lost our immunity as a result of the MOU and the 180-degree term by the Democratic majority last year has put us where we are today. Now, I try to be a diplomat and I try not to speak against those that um, are volunteers to the community, but when they come back and start making the same statements that they've been making for the past three years, even though they've made those statements back in November, and the residents obviously did not believe it then, they're not gonna believe it now, so why go there again? You know it's not true, you know the planning did what was right, you know the facts by now, and you should just stop. So Councilman Verser and uh, Sabari, Sabari, I'm assuming it was the two of you that were speaking again about the planning board, shame on you. Shame on you. You shame the town, you shame yourselves when you condemn the planning board. You know that, you tend to do it anyway. I say good riddance, well, we won't see you in December, we don't see you tonight. And I'd like to ask you, why do you refuse to let yourselves be seen by video? I'd like to hear from each of the three council persons that feel they are either not, not, uh, it's not necessary to show their faces. Are you hiding? Is there a reason why you don't? Is there a premeditated reason? Please to share it with me.
That was the.
Verser.
Sabari, Councilman Versa.
Mr. Perino, I think you've been talking to the mayor too much about us not being um, live on Zoom. There's nothing to.
I put it up first, actually. I put it up in the first Zoom meeting two months ago, sorry, Councilman, I don't know if you were there or not.
Okay, Mr. Perino, we don't have to participate, um, you know, uh, with our, you know, being live on this Zoom, like, it it's our choice. And I don't, I think you're reading into it too much. We're not hiding.
Councilwoman O, you are elected council member, not a stalker. So right now, you're looking at us, but we can't see you and what you're doing.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not stalking anybody, okay? I I have not been um, to, you know, my beaut, my uh, hairdresser, you know, I have a lot of gray hair coming out.
Neither have I.
Gray, you know, like, it's my personal choice. I don't see why you're looking into this like too much. I have nothing to hide except for my gray hair, okay?
Look, I just think it's a matter of decorum for the public to be able to see their elected officials and not be speaking to a sound wall.
And that was my point two months ago, and I'll keep repeating it. It's your choice, I don't say that you're breaking the law. But it it just doesn't, it looks like it's a political maneuver for whatever, I can't figure out, but it seems political because and thank you, Mr. Song, Councilman Song, for uh, for appearing, uh, it's great.
Well, I do not have gray hair.
No, what doesn't, you know, listen, none of us look.
Oh, what's Councilman Versa's excuse then?
You know, it's just, it's, it's, it's silly, but you know, it it seems like it's a concerted uh, effort on on the Democratic side, and I just don't, I just don't get it. So I'll keep bringing attention to it, you keep on uh, on being invisible, so be it, nothing I can do about it, but I think it's a, it's, it's important. Just as the comments that were made this evening about William Wu introducing a resolution, right? I was present for the meetings when you decided to um, censor the mayor for things that happened in closed session, right, on several occasions. And the reaction of the Republican councilperson, even the mayor, they had words to say, but they didn't call Billy the puppet, no guts, William, dumber than you look. Puppet, read it. I think those are comments I heard mostly from Councilman Versa. Unprofessional. You're a professional, you're an MD, you should speak a lot better than you speak, Mr. Versa. You have no right to condemn Councilman Wu or anybody else. He has the right to do it, you don't have to agree with it, don't call names like a, like a teenage teenager, like a child. I have nothing else to say, thank you.
Well, well said.
Appreciate that, Russ. I can take a hit.
Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to be heard? Mrs. McMaro? Uh, Mrs. McMaro, you're on mute.
Did I, did I take it off now? I'm not sure.
Uh, yes, we hear you, please state your name and address.
Okay, thank you. Um, Carol McMaro, 489 Summit Street, Tango Eclipse. Uh, I just have two questions. Um, one is regarding uh, in in some of the um, Oprah requests that I put in, by the way, Ms. Sabari, I've granted every extension that's been asked of me by the Borough. Um, I've been beyond reasonable on every Oprah request, and I think we all know what's going on, and the courts have been deciding, and um, the outcomes of the cases speak for themselves. So I think your comments to Ms. O'Shea in trying to minimize her questions were misplaced. Uh, as for closed session meeting minutes, it's, it's unacceptable that a year and a half later, there is still no access to closed session meeting minutes. I'm not going to say anything else on that. What I wanted to ask the Borough attorney, um, I will direct it to him, not gonna ask the mayor, because I know he does rent from Mr. Shapizzi's building, so I don't want to uh, ask him that question. Mr. Benica, if you would be kind enough to just um, if if you can, and obviously if it's a subject that you can't talk about, I understand that. On some of the responses for documents provided under Oprah, um, I have seen discussions with Mr. Shapizzi's office, with Mr. Marinello's office, and um, I see Mr. Wunsch, I see Mr. Martin, um, and I'm just wondering, since Mr. Shapizzi had worked on the 800 Silvan matter, if he's now in discussions on anything having to do with affordable housing for another client, how does that affect our position as a Borough? Since that would also, he has knowledge of what went on with 800 Silvan, he that he now, if he's working for the other client, which I believe from other, from Oprahs that I've read, or sorry, the responses I've read, that he may be working for another client now. How does that affect the Borough's? The Borough, that's my, that's my question. I don't even know if Councilman Wu was aware of it, or Councilman Pharoah, the mayor, are you aware that Mr. Shapizzi is involved in these discussions? Are you on these emails?
Uh, not on the emails, but I did find out that he was representing uh, two parties before the.
Okay, well, there are many, many emails going back and forth between all, Mr. Wunsch and all these other individuals.
But that's actually, you're, you're, you're touching on another subject, which is that the council members, who are majority here, have instructed the attorneys to not share those emails, information, anything else with Councilman Pharoah, Wu, or myself.
Right, well, I do believe, well, as I said, and and again, you know, Mr. Sabari can defend this all she want, I believe there are reasons for the delays in all the production of all these documents. Um, and this has been going on way before COVID-19, and as I said, I've granted every single extension that was asked of me. But um, Mr. Benica, if you could answer that question, um.
So, Mrs. McMaro, I apologize for cutting you off if I did. No, I'm sure. Answer is, to be perfectly honest with you, I don't even know who Mr. Shapizzi is, I don't have any dealings with the affordable housing case. Uh, you would have to talk to Mr. Marinello. Um, as far as, you know, most of what I do, a lot of it is just handling the actual review of the documents that I receive, uh, dealing with Oprah's, uh, providing legal advice in certain instances to Mrs. Duffy. Um, a lot of, you know, a lot of the stuff I'm handling is really just between me and Joe, and.
That's okay, I appreciate that. Then, uh, you know what, I can leave that to Councilman Pharoah, Councilman Wu, and and Mayor Kranjak to know that, you know, that there are many conversations. Um, and it caught my eye when I saw Mr. Shapizzi's uh, offices, representation um, of what appears to be another client with the special master, you know, which, you know, it this, it's a very interesting situation here. And um, you know, he did, he was deeply involved in the 800 Silvan um, sit, representation. We all know that. I know it, because obviously I was the liaison for when they were trying to um, when we had our, our uh, meetings, private meetings. Private meet, when I say that, I mean um, mediation meetings. Um, so I don't know, I, as council people and mayor, I'll let you look into that if, you know, and what is that situation.
So that was part of actually the investigation that Councilman Wu was asking for, and uh, the council majority uh, voted, although they should not have voted because it concerned them, and um, they certainly do have a conflict voting on anything like that. Uh, so we'll see where that ends up.
Well, the, the situation that I can't understand, Mr. Mayor or Mr. Benica, I mean, Alan Park taught us very well, I mean, that's the first person that taught us what your rights were um, to get documents, so I just cannot understand how Councilman Wu, the mayor, and Councilman Pharoah are not getting emails. They, I mean, if the emails are there, they just have to be turned over to them. Unbacked, I just, I just, I don't, there, there's court orders on that already.
Right, but there's two sets of roles, right? Sets of roles, uh, one for us, one for them.
That's not true, Mayor. Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna comment, Mayor, on that, I'm not, I, I, I. That's really. And I said it that if.
That, Debbie, you can, you can pretend that you're cooperative, but you're not, because you had the ability to.
I'm not pretending, Mayor.
Oh, you are, you're a pretender. You, you say whatever is expedient, but at the end of the day, you don't actually do the right thing.
Other people are being accusatory, and the bottom line is, is that there is nothing there. You'd like to believe there is. You're getting the same documents that I get.
No, I'm not actually, no, I'm not actually, because you actually told the attorneys not to give us documents.
That is not.
Foolishly, they put their licenses on the line and listened to you.
That is not.
Promised was better than just doing the rule of law thing, right?
Once again, you're, you're lying once again.
No, not really, you could call me liar, you could call me names, but at the end of the day.
No.
I believe in the rule of law.
It's the reality.
Honesty, I believe in directness, and I know you don't believe in any of those.
Okay, Mayor.
Get upset all the time.
I'm not upset.
Well, you're calling me names.
They're facts.
No, those aren't facts, those are.
Mayor, I just, I don't, I don't wanna, um, if I may, I, I, I'm just trying to be helpful on the affordable housing aspect.
Well, you could let everybody, every other council member know also, Carol, not just the Republicans, because none of the other council members are aware of the documents that you're speaking of.
You're telling it right now.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm saying this for the first time right now, I don't, I'm telling all of you.
You specifically said that Billy and Ramon and the mayor should look into it, and you left out all the Democratic council members. We are not familiar with any emails.
Okay, if you would let me finish and not attack me, you have a habit of doing that to anyone that asks a question that, I don't know why you're getting defensive. I asked to help the Borough, you are the Borough, I know you might not understand what I'm saying, but if I reference to help the Borough, you're the Board of Directors for the Borough. So I'm sorry if you didn't understand my statement, but if I say for the Borough, that includes you, Ms. Sabari, so.
I would hope so, but.
But I'm, but I'm stating it again, and you misunderstood.
No, I didn't.
So I am saying it again.
Okay, you can go on. You can go on.
All of you should look into that and look into the emails, whatever the conversations are, and find out how that might affect the Borough. That's it, I thought that was helpful.
Thank you, that is how it should have been said the first time, but thank you.
Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard? Uh, Mr. Mather?
Yes, Heyman Mather, 75 Roberts Road. I just heard Ms. McMaro referring to some other, I guess, Oprah documents which she saw. And from what I understood, she's stating that Mr. Shapizzi, who was actually instrumental in the 800 Silvan, now is looking further into for other clients. So first of all, I wanted to thank the council and everybody for having spent three and a half million dollars of the Borough and making sure we lose basically to 800 Silvan. So now, are we going to go on another episode of another three or four million dollars to lose to another developer over here? And again, we're gonna hear the same stories that you, the mayor, are not getting documents. These council members are holding the documents, and since the attorneys, they get paid by these the majority of the council members, they're only going to listen to them. Is that, and, and the judge comes back and says, hey, you guys, you're the bad guys, you haven't done anything for 40 years. I mean, I'm just wondering, how is the citizen responsible for that?
Well, Mr. Mather, you, you have, you raise a really good point, because um, history does predict a future with this council majority. I've asked to replace all attorneys, but failing that, I've asked that we just have one on the affordable housing matter, uh, who actually takes direction from the governing body and not just uh, you know, the council majority that we have. I'll, I'll give you an example of how we waste money. Uh, looking at Mr. Wunsch's May bills, on May 7th, he sent a Guinness Book of World Records time entries. He had 49 time entries for 16.1 hours. And then, um, on May 8th, I guess he ran out of time, but he still had 38 time entries, but for point two, point one hour more, so 16.2 hours for opening and reviewing emails that were not even sent to him as the main recipient, but as copied for the most part. So when I ask to replace them uh, all, I get pushback. But it's clear that any lawyer, any attorney on this Zoom right now realizes that they've never seen a timesheet with 49 entries for one day for the same client. I've been practicing law 30 years, and um, it's astounding to see that somebody would do something like that, and that these people will continue, continue to employ that person and bring them back for more and more and more. Uh, so yes, sir, history is predicting the future. We either have a very incompetent council majority or a very corrupt council majority. I'm not sure which it is, but that's why I wanted the investigation, which they, of course, voted down.
Oh, I wasn't, I wasn't, I mean, it must have happened prior to me, uh, this uh, investigation, whatever you're referring to.
No, we voted on it tonight, actually, and they voted it down. I want to investigate them for the, the waste.
Mayor, it's not a back and forth, could you let the public finish?
I think under New Jersey law, I chaired this meeting, Ms. Sabari, and you may not.
To accomplish.
Have the floor and defend yourself, so please go ahead, have the.
Can I? Can I ask one question? Mr. Serenian is really the affordable housing litigator?
No, he, he's an attorney.
Housing attorney.
The litigator is Tom Troutner from Key.
Yeah, I was saying, about to say, Mr. Troutner is the litigator. What's the role, what's the role for Mr. Albert Wunsch or Marinello in this whole scenario?
Well, it's to break Guinness Book of World Records, or how many time entries you could have.
We actually can't talk about this, Mayor, once again.
No, that's not privileged, 49 time entries in one day, that's not privileged.
Want to explain to you that he was intricately involved with.
He was not, I was reading his.
Yeah, my, here is my question, it's not about month, month of May. My question is, what's Mr. Albert Wunsch's role in this entire litigation? From what I see, he has no background in affordable housing. So what is he really managing here? And what is he doing in the court or in the papers? I haven't seen any papers from them.
I guess.
Except one or two, one or two.
But that's a good question too, Mr. Mather, so I guess like in many states, uh, what you call that is political payback. He's the guy that gets hired to do.
Ariel, watch yourself, watch.
Political payback.
No, that's slander.
It's not slander. He's not hired him as a political.
You see, this is what you do, you lie to the residents.
No, it's the truth. No, it's the truth.
Mr. Maita, we should have settled back in July.
You literally assaulted in conversation, and you stood by.
Mayor, you and all the other residents leading you to believe that you could win the affordable housing. And look where we are.